Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, February 18th, 2016. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President South.
Here.
Trustee Ballard.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Sodewich.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Village Manager Frances.
Here.
Village Attorney Malina.
Here.
Also present, Village Clerk.
Have a quorum. If you'll please rise for the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everyone who is here and everybody watching at home. First up tonight is public comment. If you would like to address the board, I ask that you do so from the podium so that everybody can hear and see what you have to say. I don't know if some of you might be here for our discussion about keeping of chickens and bees later. You're welcome to have your comments now. If you'd rather wait until we get to that agenda item, you can certainly do that as well, whichever you prefer. So would anyone like to address the board at this time? Okay. Moving on, we'll go next to the reports of village officers. First up is my report. I have a couple of things. This past week, we had our pre-construction meeting with the businesses on Burlington concerning the upcoming street resurfacing and streetscape on Burlington. The time schedule is to begin in mid-March, weather permitting. Just to reiterate, the contract for this street resurfacing and the streetscape is between the Illinois Department of Transportation and the contractor, ALAM. So technically, the contract is actually between those two entities. They have 75 days, construction days, to complete the project once begun. However, IDUD will not start counting those days until May 1st. The one change of some significance that's been made to the sequencing of the project is we had originally thought that we would begin in front of Salon D'Amour and work counterclockwise around the street. We now determine it's better for our businesses if we begin in front of Arcade Jewelers and work clockwise. That will allow us to get beyond the choo-choo, for example, before summer so that the choo-choo can have their outdoor seating. It'll also impact Riverside Foods less because we'll be missing April and we won't be back in front of their store until probably July or August. So that's the only main difference. And I just want to reiterate how important this project is and how important it is for our residents to patronize our businesses during the construction period. I know it's easy to be put off, but our engineers have assured us that there will always be hard surface on the sidewalks in which to walk. There will always be two-way street access until we get to the actual resurfacing of the street, which won't be until the very tail end of the project. So there will be minimal interruptions in terms of getting to and from and in and out of our businesses on Burlington. So we encourage you to do that. The other big news for this week, actually just happened in the last couple of days, is the good news about the bike path that we began last year in front of Riverside Brookfield High School. You might recall that with the cooperation of North Riverside and the Friends of the Park, of the Forest Preserve, the school, and especially Commissioner Jeff Tobolsky, we were able to put together a project with North Riverside to put the bike path in front of Riverside Brookfield High School. The missing component, then, was from 31st Street down and then up Golf U to 26th. And for a while, it looked like that might not happen mainly because of the budget impasse in Springfield. However, Mr. Tobolsky went to President Preckwinkle of the Cook County Board and told her about the cooperative effort that had taken place among all these different players here to get that first section done. And that was a main factor in the county board then agreeing to put up $750,000 to complete that bike path. So the plan now is to complete the bike path in 2016, which not only will create a safe route for kids coming from North Riverside down to RB, but will also fill in the missing gap that will connect the Riverside Bike Pass to the Salt Creek Trail up on 26th. So it's a major accomplishment that's been, since the 1980s, it's been talked about. And it's especially appropriate to thank Commissioner Tobolsky and President Preckwinkle for saving this project and making it happen for all of our kids. So those are by two items. Manager Frances.
I don't have a report this evening.
That's nice and short.
Yes.
Okay. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone needs removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion of the second to approve. Motion by Ms. Collins.
Right.
Second by Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballard.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Sodewich.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. There are none this evening. That takes us now to considerations. First up is a discussion of economic incentives for potential new restaurant at the Village Center. Manager Frances.
If you recall, in the fall of 2015, the village board had authorized me authority to waive certain building permit fees when a new business came in and they had certain, met certain qualifications with regard to waiving those fees. We do have a potential new business looking to go into the vacant storefront of the Village Center. You'll notice in your packet, the name of the location is, or the name of the business is Pizza Barra. They have a location currently in Oak Brook, and they are looking at opening within the Village Center. However, they are asking for certain incentives that are outlined within the agenda history sheet. They are inclusive of waiving certain building permit fees that right now staff is estimating to be $30,000. And then in addition to that, we are also estimating direct costs to the village of approximately $5,600. Additionally, in my discussion with the owners today, they have also asked if the village would consider waiving the first three years of their liquor license fee, which is $2,700, and their business license fee, which is $300. So that in total is $3,000 in licensing fees on an annual basis. So in total, they are asking for not only that, but also for the village board to consider a sales tax rebate, both for places for eating tax and sales tax. And there is a table based on what they estimate to be their sales over a three-year period, what their sales tax returns would be, and their places for eating tax returns would And if there are any questions with regard to the items that were outlined, they do meet all of the items as they were inclusive for waiving the building permit fee. However, it's in excess of my authority that the board has provided. With regard to the direct fees that we're discussing, the board previously had not provided staff the authority to waive those fees.
Is that it?
Yes.
The only thing that I would add to that is, you know, this is an exciting possibility for our village. This is exactly the kind of restaurant that every time we've done a study in this town, this is the kind of place that our residents have said that they wanted. I would highlight that even with the waiver and the rebate of the taxes, we would still be collecting the 1% non-home rule tax, which is estimated to be about, over the period of three years, about $47,500. And also, we would be benefiting from the increased valuation of the building itself, which would, according to staff's estimates, would generate additional property tax for the village of about $5,000. So although there are waivers of fees and rebates of taxes, this is still a very good opportunity for the village. So with that, I would ask if there's any discussion about the incentive package.
And the initial step would be to not only begin drafting an agreement, but also, at the next meeting, if the board was inclined, we would draft a resolution authorizing staff to waive the fees so that they can begin the build-out.
And it's interesting, their target date is September, which would dovetail perfectly with the Street State project, so we would all kind of come together at once. Mr. Ballerine, did you have something?
Sorry.
I think this decision tonight, whether to waive these fees or not, is, I think, one of the biggest decisions that I've made while I've sat on this board. I mean, if you look at our downtown and you look at the space and the economic engine that this one space can drive to this village, especially with the name of what's coming in, this could be a game changer for this village. It really, really could. And I can't be more excited about the potential, and I'm 100% behind whatever we have to do to do this, so.
What is the amount that they are looking to spend or rehab that?
It was estimated at $1.2 million.
For the build-out, you mean?
For the build-out.
Yeah, 1.2 to 1.5.
1.5.
$1.5 million.
Other discussion? Am I correct, then, that we have a consensus to approve? Mr. Pollak?
Some clarification. I agree with Trustee Ballerine in the extent that this could be a real game changer for our downtown and very thrilled and excited that they're coming in. I guess I just want some clarification. They estimated their sales, one and a quarter the first year, one and a half million the second year, $2 million the third year. Would the rebate be limited to that amount? In other words, if the first year they do $3 million in sales, are they going to get a rebate on $3 million or on one and a quarter million dollars?
Whether or not the board wants to establish a cap. We based our estimates based on their numbers. So whether or not we establish a cap in a given year, however, if they're doing very well, we may want to afford them the ability of that additional rebate to continue to reinvest in the business to make sure that the business thrive. Or whether or not we can escrow account in case they should need it within year two or year three. I mean, those are all for consideration as well.
Great. Well, I'd like to hear what people think about that. It seems, my initial reaction would be that if they're super, super successful, then that rebate becomes less necessary for them to continue, and so maybe there should be a cap. But also, I would generally say that, you know, I don't want the village board to negotiate this. I think that the village president and village manager should bring to us what they think is the best deal for the village in that sense. And so whatever you bring back to us in the form of an agreement, I'm inclined to support that. I respect your judgment. I think you'll make a good deal for the village, so this is just a question I have, something I think you need to address when you prepare the agreement. Also, I am concerned about our out-of-pocket costs. If particularly related to the permit fees, would we be out-of-pocket? So where we're actually, as opposed to foregoing fees, are they suggesting that we pay our consultant as well?
Yes. They are saying that the village absorb what we are currently estimating based on the preliminary plans of, it would be $5,600 plus with the licensing fee, there are two health inspections and it's approximately $200. So we're looking at approximately $5,800, which if you look at the increase in the assessed valuation and the increase in the tax bill, we would recover that in approximately the first year, year and a half.
Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, but again, I would defer to our negotiating team.
Other comments?
I, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I agree with Trustee Pollak. In principle, I don't think we should be coming out of pocket. We should at least be getting reimbursed for our costs. I think this is an attractive offer, or request, and an offer from the board as it's written here. I would suggest that it should be capped because I would, as Trustee Pollak said, if they outperform their own numbers, then there really isn't a need for public funds to support them in excess of what they're requesting. But there's a lot of unique attributes to this property and this concept that make me support this more than anything else I can imagine supporting in the village. So with those two caveats, I definitely agree.
I don't have a problem with the out-of-pocket costs. I do agree with the cap, but I would prefer to see a cap placed over an average over the three years rather than sticking it on one year or another year because businesses fluctuate, you know? So they could have a dynamite first year and not a great second year. So I'd rather see that cap placed on an average.
What do you guys think about that?
I don't have a problem with the out-of-pocket either. They're putting in $1.5 million as partnering with them. I have no problem with us putting up $6,000, so I don't have a problem with that. And as far as the cap, I don't want to discourage them in any way, and if that's a deal breaker, I definitely am not in favor of a cap. If you wanted to escrow it or something like that, you know, so I'd be willing to do it without the cap. So that's, like Doug said, something that you'll need to negotiate and see what their feedback is on that.
I think I'm in the same opinion that I would defer to our negotiating team. Part of me has a little bit of an issue with the direct cost, but the way you stated, this is a good opportunity and they're invested in it, so we are partnering by tossing a little bit in there. So I think I'm willing to support whatever the negotiating team needs to do to kind of make this happen. This has been a very important thing to not only us, but to a lot of the villagers and the type of restaurants, so I would agree with your comments, everybody.
Mr. Ballerine, do you have a comment about the caps or the?
I have no problem with the out-of-pocket and, you know, I don't, I don't think we should have a cap. I want them to be successful. Businesses need more than three years. I mean, it could be the fourth year they'd have a problem. This is a lot of money that they're putting out of pocket to be in this space. And it's a gamble at first. You know, I was watching a TV show last night and these guys rolled into town, it was American Pickers, just so I could get them quick. But these guys rolled into a small town in New Jersey, and Mike turns to the other guy and says, you know, he goes, "I love this town." He goes, "I've never been here, but I love it because it's vibrant, it's exciting." And he goes, "Why do you know that?" He goes, "'Cause all the shops are full. You know, there's life. You know, that's what we're missing." And this right here could maybe bring American Pickers group.
They could come to my garage.
Yeah, I think that could do.
I could help them out.
I guess my position would be that I certainly don't have, I had misgivings at first about the out-of-pocket, but then when it was explained to me about the increased valuation, that that in essence will take care of it the first year. I would be reluctant to put a cap. It's that first, the first three years in a restaurant is the critical time. And it seems to me, I mean, if they're doing that well, then the villages could be doing that well also in terms of our non-home sales tax. So certainly, we can discuss it with them. I especially think Trustee Hamilton's idea might be like a middle ground in terms of an average of the years. But I'm encouraged that everyone here seems to be on the same page, that this is something that we want to make happen. We've already met with them, we've already explained to them in detail how we've streamlined the site review process, how we've streamlined the building permit process, and gave them all the assurances that we will do everything possible to save them time and money in this endeavor. So we will take your comments and we will do with them next week, and then we will get back to the board with a report.
Do you have any idea when they would want to start?
Well, they want to open by September 1st, I believe. So they want to move relatively quickly.
I'd rather know whether they would be able to get started in May.
Okay.
And maybe a three-month holdout.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. Next up is a discussion of keeping of bees and chickens. And I think we might have some folks in the audience who wanted to have something to say about that. Would you like to address this first, and then the board will have our discussion. Just procedurally, really, all we're talking about tonight is whether there is sufficient interest among a majority of the trustees to send this on for further research and evaluation. If there is, it will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further talk. One possibility, if this was to go forward, is there might be setbacks involved, which then would be prior to public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's kind of where we are tonight. This is really kind of exploratory talk, so would anyone like to address the board?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Fournier, 305 Meadwood. I think keeping bees and chickens totally aligns with the Riverside principles. We have a farmer's market that's thriving. We've moved to a larger location with more vendors so that more people can come. We've just gotten arboretum status, so we're looking at, you know, arboretum status, you have to have over 100 trees, species. Keeping bees is really within that because it supports the entire ecosystem, one that Riverside has said that they support by claiming arboretum status. And we have an artisan community in Riverside, and we have artists, we have food and beverage makers. I think keeping bees and chickens and sustainable food fits within that. We have a lot of neighbors who have made it work in their towns. Brookfield, Western Springs, Donner's Grove, Westmont, Evanston, Naperville, and of course, Chicago. And they all have reasonable and protective measures for the residents. I've looked through all of them, and they all have, allow for four to six chickens, no roosters, no slaughtering. Coops are all in the rear yards, 25 feet from neighbors occupied residence is a good measure. Western Springs has a predator detection device to keep coyotes, any predators away. They mandate that all of the coop owners have that installed. It's only $25. Every single town makes it mandatory that the coop is cleaned every 24 hours, and they all have permit fees in the range of $50 to $75. Some towns even did trial runs. So Western Springs, they did a trial run of one year. One family had a coop. After that year, they decided to pass it as an ordinance. In Evanston, they did a trial for the first year of 20 families. They said, "We will give 20 opportunities. Only eight people even applied." Evanston has a population of 75,000 people, and they had eight people. So I think what we can expect here is far less. You know, these are a few, just a few people. We're not talking about chickens everywhere in everybody's backyard. In Evanston, they only had two complaints that entire year, and that was for unlicensed coops. And those were taken care of. I think it's also very important to keep in mind that perceived nuisance issues are already regulated under our existing village ordinances. The same things that protect us from barking dogs and dog waste will also protect from chickens and whatever perceived nuisance that they are, that they're too loud or that they're smelling. But unlike dogs, chickens don't attack and there's no safety threat. You probably wouldn't recognize if they even were on your block. They're quite pleasant. My parents have chickens. They're quiet, they don't make loud noises, they're not barking. At the very highest level, when they're laying eggs, it's the equivalent to human conversation. Their waste is extremely minimal. A 40-pound dog is the equivalent of 10 chickens' waste. And then you can use that waste for a high nitrogen fertilizer. They eliminate bugs, so you're looking at mosquitoes, ticks, Lyme disease. There are also voracious carnivores, so they will eat small rats, things like that. So they are not attracting those things, they're actually taking care of that. And they're natural composters, so if you have leftover produce scraps, you can feed it to them, and you're keeping that out of a landfill. The most important to remember is that there is zero effect on property values. Not only are they not really visible or heard from, okay, so in comparison to our neighbors who have chickens, in the past two years, Donner's Grove, these are million-dollar home closings, in the past two years, Donner's Grove had 34, Western Springs 51, Evanston 82, Naperville 69, Oak Park 15. These are all homes that have sold for over $1 million. This has not impacted their high-value homes. People who are keeping eggs, it's an investment. You are spending $1,000 for a coop, and you're taking care of it because it's important to. So you're keeping it clean because you don't go in there to pick out an egg that's covered in poop. You don't want your chickens covered in poop. You genuinely care about the animals, how they're treated, and this is the reason that you have chickens in the first place. It's also a great example for our children to understand and respect where their food comes from. So I hope that we can eventually create an ordinance that allows chickens and highlights Riverside as a progressive community that supports the proliferation of sustainable food while at the same time respecting residents who choose not to be part of that movement. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Very informative. Would anyone else like to address the board?
I think she covered just the.
Yeah.
My name is Andy Olden, 221 Herrick Road. And yeah, I think Jen pretty much covered everything, but I just want to reiterate that people who, there's going to be a small percent of people who are going to want to have these chickens or beehives. And it's going to take a lot more thought to get one of those started, to have that in your yard, to have chickens. And it's a lot more of a decision. So people who are making this decision and investment are going to take care of the chickens. Chickens won't lay eggs unless they're happy, unless they're clean, and so, you know, people who are going to make that investment and do that, they're going to make sure their chickens are happy and clean and take good care of them. And I think that a lot of people who get dogs, it's just, you know, you don't need to really think about it much, just go out and get a dog. For these chickens, you're going to have to put a lot of thought and effort into it before doing it, so it's not just a quick, fast decision that people will make. And I also don't think that a lot of people are going to do it. So I think it's nice for an opportunity for those who do want to do it and want to teach their children about sustainable living and food and how a chicken, what it eats, how it's raised, how it moves, how it grooves, how it lays an egg, and then get to eat that. And my daughter, we have a garden, and it can be a picky eater, but anything that grows in that garden, she will rip off and eat it right there. So I just think that it's very important to have these things and to teach our kids these things. And so maybe her friends will come over if I have one and I can teach them a little bit about it, and so working as a community. And I think it's a wonderful day. And the beehives, I don't know much about, but I have two small children and I would not be afraid to hop by a bee hive. I teach my kids not to swat at them, they've never been stung, and I don't think that it should be an issue. We need more bees.
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Kimber Coles, same 277 Gatesby, yes, I do live in Riverside. I'm just here tonight to be a body. I know we don't often get a great turnout at our village meetings. I sort of, you know, blame that on now they're televised, and we have such a great village staff that we can pick up the phone and call, as I have done many times. So I hope that doesn't deter anyone from thinking that there is, you know, a good group of people that would really like to see this happen. I think Jen did a really great job of sort of outlining a lot of the different ordinances in our different villages in the area. Yeah, I think it's just a great opportunity. I think they're right that not a ton of people are going to do it. It's cost prohibitive. You have to pay for the coop, you have to pay for the feed, it's a commitment, you know, it's not something one enters lightly. But I think it's a great opportunity to allow those that do want to do it, to do it and do it well. For people who don't care for the chickens... For people who don't care for the chickens, I think that is totally fine as well. I think we just have to be thoughtful about our ordinances. And like Jen said, I like the ordinances that protect the dwelling. So some villages put an ordinance of, say, 10 feet from the property line. Well, my property, I could do 10 feet from the property line, and my neighbor, you know, was built in the '40s or '50s. His house is right on the property line. So I'm 10 feet away from his house. But if we said, you know, 10 feet from his dwelling, or 20 feet, or, you know, whatever the distance is, you know, I would just throw that out there that that might make more sense than a property line sort of situation. And I think that was it. Just let's be reasonable. Riverside is filled with a very thoughtful and kind community. You know, we've only been here three years, and I've come to know that people are so kind, very thoughtful, very courteous. And so I think we can just, I think we can respect each other, you know? Oh, and for bees, I do know a little bit about bees. Same sort of situations, you know, have parameters, distance from property lines, and maybe put some parameters about where the beehive face is. The one thing about bees, and this is not the only thing, but the one thing about bees is you don't, they have a flight pattern. They have a flight path. And so you just want to direct that flight path, you know, someplace good that's no one's going to interfere and walk in around that path. And that's kind of it. They're pretty simple. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Hey, trustees, it's your turn now. What are your thoughts about this?
I'm a farm kid, so I probably have no issues with this at all. I have friends that raise bees on, you know, small acreages, and their neighbors, we have dinner right next to them, and it's, the bee issue doesn't bother me one bit. Again, I'm going to be a steward for the town, and if the town seems to think we want to take a look at this and their planning and zoning, look at it and research it in comparison to our neighboring villages, I think that's a good idea.
Other thoughts?
I guess my question, if we're really researching this for a handful of residents, is that a reason to do it? I'm not hearing a huge clamoring really for allowing this. And I believe at least one experience we had in town resulted in complaints and removal of the chickens. So I am certain that if done properly and responsibly, it wouldn't be a nuisance. I've had an experience otherwise where it wasn't proper, and it was a nuisance. So I'm also concerned with village staff and enforcement and all that. So all for pursuing and looking into it, but I have maybe a slight negative bias as a result.
You actually brought up a lot of the things that I was going to bring up. One is, you know, I thought about, what's the difference about Riverside than Brookfield and some of the other towns that you've mentioned is a lot of these other towns are grid patterns, where in my backyard, I share backyards with six other people. So in essence, I can share 24 chickens within a 50-foot radius of my back door. But like you said, how many people are actually going to do this? Would you say like 10 people in all of Evanston or seven people in all of Evanston? So, you know, I tend to agree and follow Mike's philosophy here is, you know, we went down this path, you know, and I think probably what you should understand is when an ordinance gets changed or a zoning law gets changed, it doesn't, it's just not a strike of the pen and everyone moves on. I think you were chairman of the Plan Commission when you guys undertook the solar panels. There was a couple of people that wanted solar panels. I almost choked on the lawyer bills for solar panels. I think it ended up costing like $7,000, $8,000, $10,000 in lawyer fees before you even paid for the court report and all the other stuff. So, you know, and there's so many things that we're talking about. We're talking about lot lines. We're talking about flight path. I mean, I read the same thing, flight path. And I read a thing that said when you have a beehive, a beehive should have a wall of eight feet tall around it so it causes the bees to fly up so they never go. Our fence laws are six feet. So all of a sudden, now we have to change our fence laws in order to have beehives. So, you know, and then when I read Western Springs ordinance, I mean, they have the detector, they also have that the coop has to look similar to the home in the roof pitch, and it can only be eight feet high. And, you know, I could, I could see where this ordinance starts going and people start getting their input, that I'm running down the same path as the solar panels. So we will be spending $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 for three or four families to have chickens and bees. And not that I don't, that's what bothers me. I mean, we just got done having a conversation where we were talking about giving $5,600 to a company that's spending $1.5 million to redo a business that could change the whole downtown of our village, that affects every resident of this town and affects property values directly. Okay? Chickens do not affect property values, and I don't think they hurt them, but I don't think they help them. This will help them. So I'm not prepared to start going down the path of spending the time, the effort, and the money to write these ordinances for a handful of people. If you had 250 families that wanted chickens, maybe I would feel different. But, you know, what you're asking, what you're asking the board to do is spend limited resources for very few people. And if it's eight people, we're talking about $1,000 per family. That's, that's, that's a fair amount of money to ask a government to do. And that's, that's where I run into problems. I love fresh eggs. I only eat farm fresh eggs, you know? But we don't live in a food desert. If you need them, you can get them. Pay for them, but you can get them. So that's my fault. I just think it's not economical for this board to do something like that for such a minority of people. Whether that's right or wrong, that's, that's what I feel.
That's kind of what I was, when you were talking about it's only going to be a few people, every time you said that, I was thinking, that's making me not want to do this because we do have limited resources, and it is not a small measure to take, even though it seems like it would be something simple. It is not. The process is difficult. So I am torn somewhat by this. I don't have a problem with having them, but the process to go through and to get everything the way that people want, I think is going to be a lot of investment in time and money.
You know, I can just respond to that point and the solar panels. You know, the solar panel thing was really, I think, quite different because there, I mean, really, people looked to the Riverside ordinance as kind of one of the cutting-edge ordinances that was created almost at the very beginning. There wasn't a lot, there wasn't a lot to pull from. This is not the situation. We have, we have a number of surrounding communities like communities that I think that we could, that we could easily, in fact, I think a lot of this could be done by staff and not necessarily, not me.
Well, that's my concern. It's how much time is the Planning and Zoning Commission, I mean, is this the most important thing that we need to have Planning and Zoning working on? And, you know, that, that kind of thing. I have a hard time with allocation of resources with this type of issue.
Other thoughts? Mr. Pollak?
President, as you said, pretty much one of the points I was going to make, I don't know why it would cost us any money at all to do this. There's plenty of sample ordinances that we can take from and adjust and fit to the village, and staff can handle all of that. So I see absolutely no reason why there'd be any lawyer fees for something like this other than if we have them attend meetings, which we routinely do anyway, or we often do anyway. So I don't see the financial part of it as being a factor at all. Certainly, there would be some resources, some time spent by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the staff, but I would say, you know, this isn't urgent, and they should fit this into their schedules as, as they see fit in terms of getting it on an agenda when staff doesn't, isn't occupied with other, other hearings or whatever. And just slipping it in on the agenda and, you know, so it doesn't take up, you know, when they have the time to address it. I have, I've been through the public hearing process for both chickens and bees in my other life and in my day job, and so I have some experience with it, and I learned a lot that I didn't know, you know, because the assumption is that there's, that these, that there's issues, that there's concerns, and I learned that it can be done without impacting neighbors, particularly the bees. And in fact, I'll share an anecdote from one of the public hearings I went to where residents stood up and said, you know, "My neighbor had bees for 10 years, and then he moved out five years ago and took the bees with him. My gardens have never been the same." In other words, the bees will help neighbors because they pollinate, they do what bees do. And you could just take that on a bigger scale and see how that could be, a handful of beehives throughout the village could be a benefit to the entire village. Because apparently, they travel like six miles or something like that and pollinate, you know, within a great distance around. And apparently, if you, you have to limit the species, you have to have a specific species of bees. And there's also requirements that if the bees get out of hand, you could require them to be requeened so that they calm down and they're normal again. So there's all these stuff, things that you can add to an ordinance like this that addresses the potential impact on neighbors. So I definitely think we should pursue this and see where it goes. Maybe it doesn't go anywhere, but I think it's worth spending our time because if we can do this right, and if, even if it's just a handful of residents, hopefully, it is just a handful of residents that want to do this, but I think it's worth doing and worth, worth trying to see if, if we can make it happen.
Any other comments? Ms. Hamilton?
Jury's still out with me. I don't really have a problem with bees at all. I had some bad experiences when I was a kid with chickens down the street in the city. So I'm trying to be as open-minded as possible, but I don't see any reason not to, you know...
To take a closer look. Okay.
Can I suggest that you throw out two points?
Sure. Could you do it from up here, though, so everybody can see and hear?
Sorry, this is...
No, that's okay. I'm glad you're here.
...preservation. So with regards to the fence, I have read that also. However, there are different arboretums, farms, you know, public farm, farm type places, and the way that they implement this is not to build a fence, you're not building walls. I don't, I mean, I don't think I would do chickens. It's a lot of effort. I would more be inclined to do bees. I wouldn't want an eight-foot ugly wall in, you know, in my yard. But the way they get around this is that you just thoughtfully plant the area. In my case, I have, you know, 10, 12-foot juniper bushes. So I would potentially, you know, site my beehive in the juniper bushes so that it's a natural sort of, yeah, right? So that's one thing to consider. And that sort of goes with the arboretum, and we are a very natural sort of environment. And I do like the point that Mr. Pollak made, that, you know, this isn't like super urgent. We're not here demanding our rights to have chickens tomorrow. So I think it makes total sense that, you know, if staff could look into this, you know, I think Jen and I, and I'm sure there are others in the community, would be happy to like provide you with resources and information, you know, do anything we can to help. I mean, I don't know what capacity we could, but, you know, if we could help bear some of that weight for you, I think there are those of us in the community that would, you know, welcome the opportunity to help, even if it's just education, you know? And so, yeah, I thought that was a good point.
I could be talked into studying it, but before I would send it down to the Plan Commission, what I would, what I would recommend is, this board thinks very, very hard, and they're called Italian bees, by the way, Italian honeybees. I know more about bees than I ever thought I wanted to know, that this board spends the next, I don't know whether it'd be a month, putting together a list of what we think is important and what we think is, is, you know, the top things that the Plan Commission should look into, whether it be how the coop is maintained, the height's maintained. You know, they can get into the details, but, you know, how should neighbors be? How should neighbors be notified? You know, I don't know if I like the idea of just, you know, your neighbors around, you know, just, you're touching neighbors, being notified. Should it be the same way we do a zoning variance where, you know, within 100 feet of the coop or hive, that letters have to be sent to those neighbors where they get an opportunity to respond? Because, you know, whether, you know, I did read about a lady in California that had bees, and her neighbor complained about it. And the lady never got stung, she never had a problem. But the fact that the quality of her life was disturbed because the fact that there was bees living next door, and she was scared of these bees, and that's, that's quality of life. And that lady has the right to be happy in her home just as much as anyone else does. So I don't think it's a problem that, you know, people within a certain area feel allowed to weigh in, but things like that. And, you know, I don't have a problem studying it, but I think before we send it down to the Plan Commission, Plan Commission should get some direction from us on what we want them to look at, as well as you all can send us things that you think of, and we can make sure that it gets into what Plan Commission has to look at so we don't spend a lot of time going back and forth.
Of course, please.
I am not a fan of dogs. I know that's not a popular thing to say. I understand that. I love animals in the wild, and, I mean, chickens would not be in my house if they wouldn't make noise. Dogs are very loud. They, I have to watch them poop while I'm walking. I have to watch a human pick up their poop. I'm afraid of them. I don't like them. My kids are afraid of them, and I even like, I just ask if they don't touch them when walking because I don't know where they've been, I don't know what they have on them, and I just don't, I just don't like them. I feel like maybe I should be notified when a neighbor gets a dog. I don't think they should be allowed to let their dog out and bark all day. I don't, I mean, I feel like there should be...
And they shouldn't.
Yeah, exactly. They shouldn't. But, I mean, how many dogs can each person have? I think it's three, right? I don't even know. But that's a lot. And they could be large. And I feel like if people can have dogs and cats and let their cats go outside and roam and then cry about the coyotes, but their cats are all out roaming free, I have a friend whose cat got hit by a car because she lets her cats out. It's going to happen. I just feel like, you know, I should be able to have chickens, and I should be able to have bees or, you know, whatever. And it's going to teach my children something. And I think that, I don't really know the numbers of how many people would want to do this. I was just saying that I can't imagine them being so large that we get a huge problem where like if six houses go together, it's like, oh, all six of these people want, wanted to do it, is what I meant. I still think that there's a great number of people who would be wanting to think about it, who would want to explore it, and would want the right to be able to do it. And coming from Oak Park, which is a great community, I've only heard wonderful things about having chickens there. And they also have a community garden, and I think that we should do more of these things. And we should be teaching our children, we should be having a garden at schools, and we should be teaching our children where our food comes from and how it's made, and that goes for the animals, too. I'm just very passionate about it, and I think, but even though I understand it could cost a lot of money, I understand your point, or a lot of time, and I understand that. And there's going to be a lot of people saying both sides, "Oh, I want it to look like this," or "I want it to be..." I want your dog to look a certain way, too.
That's a good idea, though. We should have a community chicken garden.
They actually have that in Oak Park.
I saw that on the website. Someone posted it. That's a great idea.
Yeah. Yeah.
Put it somewhere.
I do want to clarify one thing so people can understand. I think the board has figured out, I'm a rule guy. So to, to change a rule, we came in, residents come in knowing what the rules are with dogs and the chickens aren't allowed. So all of a sudden if chickens show up next door and you came in here and you're opposed to that, those are the people I have to look out for and that's where I'm at. And for me, that's not a 51-49 decision for me, that's kind of a beyond a reasonable doubt. That's just me. Certainly not everyone has that, but that's just kind of my perspective. So I try not to let my personal feelings come into it, but that's why I have a little bit of a bias or I need to have more evidence before I could support it.
I would just like to respond to that as well. So I have a neighbor who has six dogs. I don't know if they're legal, like I've never seen tags on them, so I don't know what the situation is with that. But those dogs are constantly in my yard. Several of them are large breeds, they push through the fence. So, you know, we all deal with something. I've seen people who are resistant to the chickens say, "Oh, well, they must ask a neighbor, they want the ordinance to ask a neighbor." And I've only seen that like once or twice. It's not the common theme of resistance, right? But, you know, I, I kind of think I get where they're coming from. Like I get that sense of asking for that, but, you know, nobody asked me if I wanted six dogs living next door. Nobody, nobody asked me if, you know, my first summer here, the other neighbor's dog mauled my son, you know, that had a history of biting. So, I mean, we all deal with things, you know? Nothing is perfect. But again, I think it just goes back to thoughtfully crafting a reasonable ordinance that, you know, reasonably and generally protects both sides. You know, let's, let's be thoughtful and kind and courteous to one another. As far as the numbers, you know, was it seven in the first year for the one community or something like that? Those were first year numbers. You know, maybe that has grown. I mean, I guess I would kind of think that knowing the community and the sort of mindset of the people that are making the effort to do this, they would form a community of their own. I'm not sure I call it a co-op or something, but a chicken community or bee community. And when you tend to have those communities, those communities tend to self-govern and they sort of put the peer pressure. "Oh, I've got this great coop. Oh, I've learned this great new technique. Oh, there's this great thing. Oh, you know, you really need to fix that." And I think that's the community we live in now. Even just, you know, we shuttle our neighbors sidewalks, we, you know, we help each other. And so I would tend to think that that would be the majority of what would happen. I totally get why some people are like, "Oh, you know, the 100-foot rule" or, you know, all these other things, but I think maybe that could possibly making it more complicated than it needs to be. I mean, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
Sure.
I just want to say that this is not something that's going to go away. This is something that is gaining momentum. So whether we decide to deal with it now or in two years or in five years, it's going to come back. And this is a trend that's happening in communities all around us and whether we're on the front lines or we're at the very end, you know, that's certainly the village's choice, but this is not something that's a fad or is going to go away. And people will continue to want this and will continue to fight for it because it's important to their values as a family and what they eat and how they choose to sustain themselves.
Anything else?
Trying to summarize here, I think that the key question, anytime you're considering a new regulation, new permission, whatever you want to call it is, will it have a negative impact on, on property values, on neighbors, et cetera? The public hearing process is what determines that. And I'd be the first one to say no to it if there's evidence presented that this would have a negative impact on, on a property, adjacent property or whatever. But if it doesn't have a negative impact, if the impact is similar to having a dog or a cat or other permitted activities on residential properties, then I think we have an obligation to allow it. But the public hearing process is to determine that and that's why I think we need to go through that process and see.
Okay. So we have a consensus that we will move forward and take a look at it. I can work with staff. I'm glad that we have a point person in Mr. Pollack.
Who's guaranteeing that any cost spend will be covered out of pocket by Trump.
And also, you know, to reach out to the community because obviously there are a lot of folks in the community who have already done a lot of research on this and we would very much like to benefit from that knowledge. So we can, we can look at that going together, we can do this together and we'll move forward on it.
Seriously though, in terms of the cost, I'd ask Manager Francis, I mean, do you agree that this is something we can do without incurring significant legal costs?
Without looking at the village attorney. That just goes way much.
Can we get the rest of the Springfield's ordinance, which is already, you know, focused on deals with chickens? There are plenty of models out there and I do think what Trustee Sell said about the solar panel ordinance was correct. There was a lot, there's a lot that had to be considered. It was not only cutting edge but unique to Riverside because of the impact on the frontal views. There were just, there were a lot of complexities about it that were very important to the village and had to be defined in a way that wasn't forcible.
Those are the three words that scare me the most, "unique to Riverside." Riverside is unique. I mean, we do have curved streets where we have backyards that there are several of them that connect. I have six neighbors. That's not what you find in other communities. This is a unique village. So there are a lot of things we need to think about. And, you know, maybe talking about it in the solar panel was, was maybe overstated, but I will say that there is going to be a lot of thought that's going to have to go into this about construction of coops, distance of coops, number of chickens culling the chickens, okay? They only lay for 18 months and you got to get rid of them, okay? I don't want a dead chicken hanging upside down in my neighbor's yard. Do you have, what do you do? What do you do with a chicken when you're done laying?
What do you do with it?
You take them to the doctor and you get them shot. Is that what you do with a chicken?
I eat these nice chickens.
Okay. We're there.
Unique to Riverside.
Is there any new, any new business from anyone tonight? We do not have need for an executive session this evening, so I'd ask for a motion to second to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Lumston. Second by Ms. Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Trustee Baller.
Aye.
Trustee Collins. Aye. Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Sadoway.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Meeting is adjourned.
Yeah.